Georgiana, this is John Pena. Can you hear me? Okay, just testing.
Everything messed up.
No, that'll mess it up. Did you keep going using your sound on?
No, I didn't.
And if you want to, um, I think that'll be okay.
I don't know how to now, um, during audio. Okay, so I'm on, but that's gonna cause the problems. Okay, is that? Yeah, you're in this. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me? It's kind of coming in twice.
That's, it's just because.
Right, so I'm gonna go to. Okay, good. Okay, okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call.
We are Linda Calhoun.
Here.
Counselor Dan Paul. Counselor Sloane Covington.
Here.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Here.
Counselor Jared Borndal.
Here.
If you'd stand and join me for the invocation, we pledge. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for our community. We ask your blessing over our communities. We go through this COVID-19 pandemic. We just ask for safety and protection and, uh, and safety. We also want to just lift up, uh, the Steve Smith family as in his passing. He was a dear member of this community for a very long time, so. Be with us throughout this meeting and just bless each one of us. In Jesus' name we pray.
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Oh. Okay, first item is approval of agenda, and we need to move the ICIP public comment down to public comment, correct? And then public hearing number 11 is gonna get taken off. This is too goofy. Does it sound goofy to them or just us? Okay. Okay, so the, uh, the ordinance for the OHV, we're gonna take that off because we're hearing from the state that they don't have the ordinance ready for us yet to move forward with this, so we won't have that public hearing. So if I can have approval for the agenda with those two changes. Okay, I have a second. Um, and if we can just do, um, to approve by acclamation, then we won't have to do roll call until we get to new visits. So motion to approve by acclamation. Okay. So we'll just make that motion and then I'll say second, and then if anybody doesn't agree with it, they can speak up and otherwise it'll be approved. You know, kind of go a little bit faster. That makes sense? Okay. Uh, so approval of the minutes of the regular meeting June 23rd, special meeting June 30th, special meeting July 10th, and special meeting July 14th. So the motion would be to approve by acclamation.
Motion to approve by acclamation, regular meeting June 23rd, special meeting June 23rd, July 10th, July 14th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there anyone that is opposed to that? Motion, please. Okay, now we'll move on to a presentation by John Pena with WH Pacific. They have been working on some numbers to do a PR for us for the Public Works Building, uh, Town Hall, and for a solar garage. So John, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, very good. Um, first off, sincerest condolences for the loss of a, a member of your community. And, uh, thank you for having me tonight. Um, so I'm gonna share my screen here and hopefully, or can anybody, Georgiana, I sent you a PowerPoint presentation. Um, I don't know if you can pull that up, but it says the host disabled participant screen sharing.
Try it again.
Okay, here we go. So let me know when you guys can see it, and I'll start the slideshow.
Okay, I got it. So.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, mayor.
Well, I just, everybody needs to go to Zoom, get out of the mid, of the agenda and go to the Zoom part, and you'll be able to bring it up. I think we're up. You have it, Steve? We're getting better, John, but we're not perfect yet.
Well, and I can't guarantee I'm gonna be perfect through this either. Uh, we've got a lot of experience with these lately, but, um, for some reason, sometimes the technical part doesn't help us out.
Okay, we're ready.
You guys ready to get going? So, um, as the mayor indicated, um, I've been, uh, up to Red River to discuss a couple of projects, um, with her and Georgiana, uh, probably starting back in November last year and then a recent visit last week, as we're kind of getting out of this COVID situation and getting back out to, uh, normal life, somewhat normal life. Um, so there's, there's a handful of projects we've been talking about. Um, I don't know if you want to talk about the fire station generator, but it is part of this. Um, so we've put together a proposal to work on some, um, concept, designs for the municipal building renovation, um, a new Public Works building and a solar shade structure. And then, uh, there is also a, a small little project to talk about adding a, uh, generator to the fire station. As part of that, there was also some discussions about adding, uh, openers to the garage doors for the fire station. I don't know if anybody can confirm that they've installed those since. Um, we've been out there, but the last time we were out there, they did not have them. Um, and they were using ladders to open up the doors, which is a little bit of a concern, so.
They actually have garage door openers. We confirmed that.
Okay, so the generator, uh, we'll, we'll talk about that project, so we'll, we'll scratch the garage door openers out of it. Um, so the municipal building, uh, we met with, um, uh, some of the stakeholders there and, and kind of identified some items, um, that they would like to, to have addressed, um, in a concept design. And, and really, everything that we're looking at right now is a concept design, um, a collaborative design process meeting with all the stakeholders, gather all the information, um, make some changes to the municipal plant, municipal building floor plan, um, at a very concept level, and then determine a budget it would take to do a final design on it, and then to actually, uh, a construction budget, um, to assist in helping to go get funding, uh, you know, whether it be through the state or grants or, or whatever avenues we can find out. So municipal building, um, talked about a new secure entrance. Uh, there is electrical problems with breakers tripping. Um, insulation and windows need upgrades. The HVAC needs upgrades. Concrete stem wall around the building needs some insulation. Uh, there is some drainage problems in the front of the building that need to be addressed. Um, north face has icing issues, but I think Georgiana indicated that that's been resolved. Um, so I think, uh, there's a desire to incorporate new rock veneer on the exterior, get rid of the old railroad tie walls, um, a new elevator, uh, some ADA issues need to be addressed, and then expand the meeting room upstairs to, uh, to a potential chambers meeting room, and then renovate mayor's and administrator's office spaces, um, upstairs. And then the last is really to upgrade the building facade to eliminate the old wood. The other building that we're looking at is the, uh, Public Works Building. Um, so initially when we went out and scoped it, there was a desire to store a lot more vehicles in there. Um, since we have, since our subsequent visit last week, it sounds like a good portion of those vehicles will be, um, stored behind the municipal building under a new solar shade structure. So that's also part of, of the scope of work. So, um, the Public Works Building would store some of these, some of the vehicles. Um, there would be one office space, an ADA compliant men's and women's bathroom, one break room. Uh, they would like to have a vehicle service area with a vehicle lift. It will be located, uh, at the town property west of town. That's, is that the wastewater treatment plant or, uh, and transfer station there?
Yes.
Property? Okay, all right. And then this would be a prefabricated metal building. Some of the, the pictures you're seeing is probably a larger facility that we did for Los Alamos County. Um, that was their entire Public Works, but it was a 12-building campus, but it had some pretty substantial, um, what we would say is Public Works workspace. So, um, and I believe, did you indicate that this trailer has been moved off that site?
We're in the process of, with the final trailer. There was two there on site.
Okay. And so, um, the next one is a solar shade structure for the road maintenance vehicles. And so, um, I guess it'd be large enough for some, some of the road maintenance, but also some of the town vehicles that are currently stored in, in open weather, um, behind the municipal building. And so, um, but on top of, the actual shade would be, provided by photo of the pics covering. Um, so, and I'm just walking through the project scope and then I can walk through kind of what, uh, we would be delivering to you guys and, and what we're proposing for cost. Um, fire station generator and not garage doors. We're not gonna address the garage doors at this point. That's already been addressed. Um, we had sized up a generator, oh, that was probably back, uh, December-ish, maybe January, for the full building load, and that cost of that generator came out to be about $40,000. Um, since then, the mayor's asked if we could do some, um, basically look at critical elements to keep the critical, let's say, you know, communications, IT support, garage doors, anything that's critical that can't go without power, and resize a generator for, um, simply those critical items in the event of a power outage. So, um, we're gonna go in there, determine the critical loads with the, the, uh, fire station staff, um, look at the circuiting in the panel, um, see if there's any way that we can re-circuit things to keep everything, keep, to minimize how much changes we're gonna have to the circuiting. And then go through an evaluation of the pros and cons of what we need to do to either place this generator in the building or what we're gonna have to do to put the generator, um, basically on, uh, the vacant property, the town property that's west of the, uh, fire station, um, behind the municipal building. So, to accomplish this, um, we've used this collaborative design process to plan out, uh, projects, um, on, on almost all our projects now. And so, the picture that you see in the upper right is, um, for Sandoval County, Quibble of Santa Ana Fire Station 21. Um, we had a lot of stakeholders for that project, mostly because it was, it involved two entities. Uh, the fire station was built on Quibble of Santa Ana lands, but it, it was, um, funded by Sandoval County and USDA, so there, there was a, it's a great way to put all the players in a room for a couple hours, get everybody's concerns, get it all documented, and then go develop, uh, a plan that, that has this all stated as kind of the groundwork to move your project forward. Um, we'll also be taking, uh, the hard copies of the municipal building and tracing, tracing them to get a lot, electronic CAD files, uh, for the planning of that project. We're gonna develop a new concept architectural floor plan for the municipal building and the Public Works Building. We're gonna develop a concept site plan and elevations for the new Public Works Building and the photo of the takes shade structures. Um, and then as we stated, we're gonna look at the, uh, generator for the fire station. At the end of all this, we're gonna provide a, uh, CDP report to incorporate all four projects to include preliminary estimates, um, for final design and construction. Um, once we're to that point, uh, we have an avenue through, um, I know you guys have a grants administrator there as well. We have a grant guy on staff, um, but we also have, um, some good political connections at the legislature to hopefully, uh, get in front of them for the next session if there's any money at all. You know, but there, there's a lot of different avenues that we can look at to, to try and, you know, get grant money for the design and, and construction, uh, and both if, if we can get there. So, um, I mean, if, before I go on, is there any questions about what we're gonna do for you guys? Cause I only have one more slide. Um, I presented this in letter format to, uh, Mayor and Georgiana, and they asked me to attend tonight to, to give you kind of the high level and, uh, of where we're at. So, is there any questions about any of this right now?
You guys?
So the final one is what, what is it going to take? So the municipal building, public works and shade structure. We've proposed a lump sum fee of 25,000 for our work. And then for the fire station, we want to do that on a time and materials basis because I don't think it will take nearly as much as $3,500. But if we get into a lot of alternative evaluations, you know, it could be there, but what we're trying to do is handle all of these meetings in one day. So whatever day we choose, we want to be efficient with everybody's time, but it's going to be a, a pretty long working day to take stakeholders in and out. If it goes over two days, I'm still fine with the fees that we have. But we, you know, we really want to try to get as much hammered out within two days maximum. With our staff, we'll have an architect up there, electrical engineer, mechanical engineer. No need to engage a structural at this point. And then we'll have a civil engineer to help look at all the aspects of all these projects. I believe the building that may take the most time is the municipal building. Public Works will go relatively quick and may take a couple of back and forth with floor plans on that. But that is essentially what we're looking at right now. So I, at this point, I'd open up to any questions, concerns, comments, complaints. I think this is a relatively reasonable proposal, considering all the things that we're looking at. And, you know, the, the cost information and project information you'll get out of it.
Anybody? And they are on CIS, so we don't have to go out to CES.
Yes. Yeah. If we, if we go that route, the only caveat is we'll have to add the CES fee on top of it. And that's like one and a half percent. So not a whole lot of, not a major increase, but just keep that in mind.
Do we have to do this for this proposal since it's over 20,000 or is it 30,000? 60, so we wouldn't even have to worry about that. Okay.
So we're not, yeah, we're, we're not even 30, over 30 right now. And like I said, whatever we don't use on the, the fire station, you guys just pay us for the hours we put on it. It's hard until we get in there and actually look at the circuiting on it. It's hard to define it, but it's also hard to identify if, if we put this in the building, generators are allowed for one. And the, the other thing that needs to be considered is they, they have an enormous amount of air intake. So if we put louvers in the building to, to handle the air that the generators, you know, basically intaking, that's going to create, you know, a cold spot in the high bays. So, you know, potentially we might have to build a small room around it that has enough size. But, you know, it, it could get a little bit more complicated. I think the idea of taking it and putting it behind the municipal building may be the cheapest option. But I think we needed to weigh the pros and cons of both of them as part of this.
So counsel, the reason we're at this is because we really don't have any projects that are on the shelf ready to go. And so, you know, these are some things that we've been wanting to do for a while. And so this gives us just to start to get going on it. And so we don't have it on for approval. So.
It was just a presentation because of the, with the prices that Mr. Pena had submitted to us, it wouldn't have to go through the body.
Okay.
It can be done administratively.
So we just want to make sure that you guys are aware of what we're doing and that this is the direction that you want to move forward.
And we're, you know, we, we've been up in the community before, but we were not. So Georgiana, Mayor, you know that Mike, Mike Malloy was his former firm was worked on the convention center, but I think the last project our firm actually worked on for you guys was a halipad. So, but we, we were very interested in working with the community up there. I'm an avid outdoor sports guy. So anywhere where I can work and do a little fishing, I'm all for it. But we really interested in, in working with the community and, and it's a place that we really think that you can benefit from some of our services. We're in Taos County as their on-call engineer. Last year, for an example, is we, we went through federal lands grant application and we were able to secure them $5 million for two bridges and a couple of roadway projects. That work actually gets contracted to the federal lands contractor and not us. But it, it was a great service to the community. So I think they spent, they gave us about $5,000 to write grants for them and their return was $5 million. So and we're also out in Questa doing quite a bit of work out there for them as well. And so we're up there quite a bit and we got guys that are familiar with the area. And, you know, when we were looking at, you know, the one project that, that we have a lot of interest in is the Red River Trail. And we're, we're actually looking at this thing on the next, if we can slip this into the next federal lands grant application and see if we can, you know, work with you guys to get you some money for that trail.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay.
No. With that being said, do you guys need me for anything else or am I free to leave or, or can you sign me out?
Yeah, I think you're free to go. Thank you, John. We appreciate it.
Okay. No, thank you guys for having me. Please discuss with yourselves. Let me know if there's anything else you guys need from me. And if we need to revise anything, just let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you guys. You guys have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye. We did not get that property down there. That's right. So we are moving on to Plan Two.
Plan B.
Plan B. Yeah.
Moving forward.
Yep. Okay. Financial report and approval of expenditures.
We received, GRTs received in July, collected from May. Instruction was at $2,623.45, 95%. Retail trade down $2,414, 11.16%. Real estate was down $7,009, 49.10%. Accommodation food service was down $7,772, 24.46%. Our lodges tax recap, we had three lodges that did not report for the month. We're down $15,064, 36.77%. Year to date, we're down $18,182 or 2.41%. First receipts tax for the month and year to date is down $16,882, 17.77%. So that was for May.
That was for May. And so what was year to date?
Uh, 78,115, 25. Last year collected was $94,996.88. And so year to date and month are, because we're starting.
Okay. So, so we were year to date down 17%. Okay. Yes, it is. It's not as bad as it could have been. Thank goodness we had some good nuts early on. Okay. If you guys want to review the expenditures and see if you have any questions. And we're still up from 17, 18. And we're still, you know, 2018, 19 was an extremely good year. So we're still up from 13 to 18. I mean, it's still doing okay. We just don't want to be down. Did you have any questions, George? Anybody have any? Okay. If not, we will take, I would take a motion to approve the financial report and expenditures by application.
My motion, we accept plans reporting that, let's finish it by application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You want to post? Okay, motion carries. And we'll move on to committee reports, public safety.
We did have a meeting. Agenda work department reports. Chief Wells for the fire department reported there were 47 calls for EMS department. For fire and EMS as a whole compared to volume in 2019 same month, it was down approximately 80, 80 cases. There were a total of 54 ambulance calls, 15 transfers, 27 EMS totals through June were 84 transfers and 22 EMS calls. Department's gone back to monthly EMS training in the classroom and with distancing and masks. They're reporting currently a total of five COVID-19 cases murdered or reported in that week. John McCollum, town's fire inspector, passed his national EMT test. He's now will need to complete the state test and then be able to start full-time with him and the EMT and that's. The EMT intermediate class was canceled. They weren't hoping to get three people enrolled. Chief Wells is trying to coordinate to see if they can provide, do an in-house class for that training. Expecting to pick up the new ambulance this last week of June, early July, I guess it was July.
Day, Monday today. Yeah.
One of this meeting, the town was under fire restrictions. And they were not expecting a fourth closure. And they were going to have a meeting on July 15th to do an update there. And in the meantime, I guess the town has come off restrictions and the forces planning on coming off by this weekend already. Marshal's office, Tim Bourne, reported the call volume is slightly up from last year. These are contributing to the volume of mental health consumer calls. The issues have been solved.
No, they're not. I'm in here in a second, you know?
Trying to get people the help they need. People are just tense and frustrated right now. In New Mexico, legislature is going to require all New Mexico officers in the state of Mexico have body cams that will be filming at all times. The department will need to upgrade to the new system. The New Mexico Municipal League is offering pay upgrades for smaller towns and average system costs $21,000 plus some monthly fees for storage. Tim Bourne was going to research the process and see what was going to take to get that assistance. He's reported that the governor's looking at doing away with qualified immunity for the New Mexico police. This will be devastating if it happens. Qualified immunity is a process to protect officers from fearless lawsuits. When good faith is applied, for example, if an arrest is made in good faith, the defendant could sue the officer for the arrest if the person later found to be innocent. This goes into effect, a lot of the individuals around the state will, that they will be leaving. State had a meeting last month on the ROV traffic on Main Street's agenda. And we're looking in September to discuss the issue. If it gets proven, Main Street will also be open to all of these zones and we adjourned.
And I believe she did sign the qualified immunity. I don't know if she may change this to it or not, but I do think she signed it. The governor signed it. Yeah, I think so. It's not good for the officers, but, but apparently there's a limit to what they're responsible for because the municipal league was looking into that and see how they could still be protected. And we've also submitted a quote to the league for our cameras, our body cams. So we made a deal with that. Okay, Public Works.
Okay, we did have a meeting. Dennis Engineering, Tappan did a presentation on the sidewalk project. So we had discussions on having the bump outs and what that material would be. And we have all agreed that the wood plank, concrete at the bump outs would be very attractive, I thought. So more to come on that, I'm sure. So it's just the beginning of this. Is Russell on?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think we got some changes with our, with the project updates, some good news on the Pioneer tank. It's in good shape. Cut out some holes and make it thick enough and all that good stuff. So.
You may want to, pardon me, but Russell may want to add to that. He just got some news today on that.
Okay. Russell.
Can you hear us, Russell? I mean.
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
There you go.
Yeah, I got a update from Tappan today. We, you know, we cut out the six coupons in the floor of the tank. And, you know, we looked at them, they looked fine. And the, the company that cut it out, DNR tank, they looked at it and they said it looked fine. But when they took them back, did the sand blasting on it and the NACE inspector looked at it, there is quite a bit of pitting in several places. So it's looking like we're going to need to replace the floor. So I'm going to get with Isaac and Deke tomorrow on that. Because replacing the floor is going to be, if they get the okay to do that, it'll be about 60 days by the time they get the material and by the time they get it installed. So it'll, it's going to push the project back a little further. And so it'll be that the floor won't be installed until October.
What does that do to that ceiling that they have to do that takes so long to cure? The painting or the painting or whatever they do to it, that's, that's dependent on the temperature as to how long it takes it to cure and set up or dry or whatever. What does that do to us?
That's, that's the one thing that we talked about. What can end up happening once the, they get the floor installed, it'll be primed. And depending on what our winter's looking like, what we may do is go ahead and fill the tank, use it for the winter and then next spring drain it and then sandblast it and recote the roof and the walls and the bottom.
You'll have a primer on it?
So it'll have primer on the floor. So that'll protect the floor and then the paint, they'll leave the paint on just like it is right now on the walls and the ceiling. So just because of the timing and our delays with, because of the COVID and stuff, it has pushed everything farther back into the summertime than we wanted to. So we'll just kind of play it by ear and that's what I want to get with Isaac and Deke tomorrow. Because we would be able to make it through the, the winter without using that tank. But the concern is going to be fire protection. Because they're not going to be able to draft out of the pond in the winter time. So what we may end up doing is go ahead and get the floor in, get it, have it primed, have it put in. And then go ahead and discontinue the project until springtime. So we can get that tank back in use.
Does DNR tank dribble for kids spending the project?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear that.
Is DNR tank agreeable to extending the project? Is DNR tank agreeable to extending the project?
Yeah, that was going to be their recommendation. That if it came to the winter time and the paint wasn't going to be cured, is that we go ahead and, and wait. And that's what we do, we put a stop on it. And so the number of days, because they have a hundred and fifty days to finish the project. So, but if we stop early, what we would do, the, the count stops on their days and then we would pick it up again in the springtime.
Is there an increase in cost due to that?
We, to replace the floor is about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, but we have that in the grant funding. So there's no increase in cost to the town.
And so because of the delay and having to re-drain the tank, that doesn't give us any increased cost next summer?
They, well, what we'll do is we'll use up the water, just like we did this time, as we'll, we'll shut the fourteen down and we'll use the water in the storage tank and get it down to where it's empty. And then, and then go from there. So we, there shouldn't be any cost to the town.
Okay, good.
Will they have any conflict, time scheduling to continue the project or will it be a priority? In the spring?
In the springtime. That's what, we'll be in talk with them on that to find out because we're going to have to work this out if, if we go ahead and decide that's the way we want to go. But like I said, Isaac will be back tomorrow and then Deke will be here and we're going to pow-wow and get on the phone with Tappin and talk about it. We had, we have five hundred and fifty thousand, or five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contingency funds from the grant. So if we're anticipating that we would be spending two hundred thousand out of that for the replacement of the floor.
Yeah, we just don't want to go into having next summer with no fire protection next summer again. So it'd be nice if we could get that thing up and running by July.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Earlier the better.
So do they think they'll be able to come in and start fairly, fairly early in the spring?
As far as I know, they will. We'll see, you know, like this year, they were delayed because of the COVID. And so that's why, you know, we went out to bid early and we awarded the project early, but because of COVID, we weren't able to get started like we wanted to.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Oh, see, you're not done with your report yet. Did you finish?
Well, I mean, Russell's probably going to talk some more about these two waters, the delays that we've had. Problems with the, some superintendents. How's that going?
We have had changes in superintendents. We're back to the original superintendent that was here on the job. He was off for personal reasons. Is the reason that he wasn't here is because he's got some family that's got some health problems. But he's back now. And so we're, we seem to be back on track. They're still, they're a little bit behind schedule, but what they're doing now is they're working on Fridays and they are working every other Saturday now so they can get caught back up.
Get you up, okay.
Good.
And we were adjourned.
Okay, Parks and Rec.
We did have a meeting and just went over a few items. Went over, kind of reviewed the status on the dog park and where we are with it. And Park's just about completed. I'm sure if everybody's been by, it's really looking great. Tons and tons and tons of volunteer. And also want to thank James with our Parks Department for the outstanding job he's been doing. I know he's, he and Louis have been working real hard with the flowers and all that stuff on Main Street as well.
They do look good.
Getting that stuff maintained, but the park's just about completed. Every time I go by, there's, even on the way here this evening, there was probably five or six people over there, so that's coming along, just about finished. Also, on the double draw trail loop, Ron Adina had been working on building the signs for the trails. And that's coming along. They just added another one yesterday before they left this morning. And so that's coming along real well. We also talked about maybe coming up with some possibility of doing a interactive map when we get them all finished, so that we'll be able to tie that in for our trail system. We also discussed restriking the basketball court over there at Mallett Park. And there's a couple of, on the playground, few handholds and stuff that need to be replaced. And so they're just working on trying to get some of that done. I know our next big project's going to be here in the park outpost. Brandon Burgh with the playground equipment, so that's going to be a biggie. It's pretty expensive stuff, so. But anyway, yeah, it's coming along. And again, just shout out thanks to all the volunteers that have been a big part. We couldn't do any of that without them, so. But other than that, we adjourned, it means pretty good change.
So let me just talk to you guys a minute about the tennis courts at Mallett because it's going to be a while before we get tennis courts down there. And so the, the guy that owns the Quell Ridge Tennis Courts in Towns came up and actually we walked around to look at it because he just, I guess a while back, greeted all of his courts. So we walked around on the existing tennis courts for a long time and talked about having to take everything up and, you know, all the work that would have to be done. And then we looked over at the skateboard park and he said, why don't we just asphalt the tennis court and move all the skate park equipment over there because the skate park is in much better condition. And he thinks we could maybe get it done for probably twenty-five thousand dollars and get everything, you know, he was saying, he was saying we might could get it resurfaced for like fifteen thousand. Yeah, it seems, and what we could do is take that middle fence and move it over to be the outside and then, and then put in another fence there, but, but you know, it's just, it's really an eyesore when you start walking around. It's just horrible. And if our Public Works guys could maybe come in and just tear up the existing tennis court and we could get them to come in and pave it, we'd be ready to go with the skate park. And then that other one wouldn't require that much, so we could actually have a nice tennis court, pickleball court. It's got the, the little shelter covered thing there that people could sit and watch tennis and we could make it kind of nice. So I'd, I'd really like to see us move forward with getting some numbers and trying to, to get that actually completed.
Great plan, just, you know, it's, as we've talked about tennis court now, that's been another one of those that's been on. With that, I also remembered, Lyndon mentioned that he would be willing here in the next month or two also. Where the kids ride the bikes up in behind the volleyball, the basketball up in there. He's planning on bringing in piece of equipment, going in there and working that bike trails for the kids.
For the kids.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be a great idea. I don't think anybody on the committee would all run it fast, make sure everybody's.
And later, it may turn into a bigger skate park once we move everything.
That was my, I know we talked a while ago before.
Yeah.
This stuff about skate park and little pump tracks and stuff back there.
Yeah.
I just don't want to lose that.
No.
No.
I know, I just don't want to forget. I know where you got it, but that makes sense.
Yeah, but, but you know, if it's not going to cost us a huge amount of money and we could have something we could use for, for several years, I think it's a good idea. So, and, and I've got, there's a guy in town that, that is possibly interested in donating some money to the tennis court, which would help.
I'd be pretty interested.
Okay. All right, Larder Schecks.
We had a quick, short meeting. The STIRI cancelled other events for the summer. Chamber was in the process of canceling events for the summer. And then April's update from the tourism department was that we were just working with Happy, the new marketing group. They came to town, we're getting the website all transferred over from Sunny Five Oh Five. Just a big thanks to all of the businesses and people in town that helped welcome Happy and host those guys for a long weekend. They're going to show off all town. And then they did the video for the hundred and twenty-fifth birthday, so thanks to everyone who was in that and helped with that. We've got the Google DMO project going now that they're working on a kind of a guide for that they will distribute once they're ready for that and then put more information on that.
I could just remind you guys to, to, if you could get your minutes in, it would be really helpful, whether in the packets. Okay, so Mayor's report. We've gotten a couple of bids or a couple of quotes for the streetlights to retrofit our streetlights. One came in at fifty thousand from Dennis Engineering. We got one from Kit Carson for thirty-nine thousand. And we're waiting to get one from Johnny Gonzalez for, you know, we don't know what he's going to come in, but, you know, we've talked about that for a long time too, so that's something we need to go ahead and move forward and, and get done. And, you know, we've got, we've got some money that we could pull and do it, so we can actually get these things accomplished.
And that's keeping the light whole and then changing the top.
The top, so that the top is, it's a little bit bigger than the one we have on the corner of the park, but it would just be the downward, downward LED.
And when we redo sidewalks, those lights would be able to stay?
I don't think. I don't think they're included in the price, so yeah, so we keep those.
Aren't they off? No?
I'm not sure.
They're off the sidewalk, I think.
Spend a bunch of money and I know we have to tear them down.
Right, right.
Yeah. I would think we could move them. Yeah, I mean, because all we're doing is the, the planning for the sidewalks.
Right.
And it may be another couple of years before we get it, but we need to get the lights addressed. That really needs to be taken care of. So then let's talk about COVID. We, we now have nine cases in town. I am, I have no reason to not think that most of those, if not all, are recovered. There were two new cases in Towns County reported yesterday or today. But they weren't in Red River, so we're still at our nine. There's a, there's a group that is not real fond of Red River and they calculated that we're at nineteen percent per thousand of cases, which is, you know, high, but that's also basing it on the four hundred and seventy-seven year-round residents. And I think during the summer, you kind of have to think that we're more of a community of about two thousand people. So if you look at that, it kind of makes it a lot more comparable to what the statewide is. But, but there is a group that's very unhappy with Red River and they're regularly calling state police, the governor's office, the attorney general's office and turning us in. So we're seeing state police up here regularly to check out those violations and we've had no, no violations have been issued, so. Our, I think our restaurants are doing a really good job. We've gotten, expanded their dining service. I think they're all happy and, you know, the, unfortunately, it's getting cold in the evenings, so I don't know if people are, are still as thrilled about eating out, but it's supposed to warm up again, so. So our restaurants are all abiding. There is no dine-in happening. I think our businesses, I think signs are up in every business, masks are being required. People are not wearing them on the streets as much as we would like to see. But we did get banners up. They're just kind of temporary until we get some that Happy's going to design us. It can be more prominent, but we wanted to get that up there. Our officers are gently reminding people to, to wear masks when they see big groups not wearing masks, so. You know, if you guys can just kind of help with that, you know, they, they say if eighty percent of the population wears masks for four to six weeks, we'd be done with this. So whether you agree with masks or don't agree with masks, we need to wear them to try and get past this. I'm hoping that the governor comes out this week and does some change to the quarantine. That's probably the hardest thing to enforce and so we're definitely relying on our, on our hotels and motels to enforce that. Edel Vase has closed down because they didn't, didn't want to worry with the enforcement, so they're actually shut down. I would encourage everyone to not post things that are contrary to the public health order. We are enforcing it in Red River. We need to be very positive on Facebook. We're doing a new little campaign with Mr. Panda, I guess Miss Panda, and the mask. So, you know, we're trying to, trying to do everything we can to turn this positive so that we can hopefully get this group to embrace the fact that we are working to try and do this better. There's a big push in Towns. Go home, they're being very ugly to anybody without a state license plates. And we don't want that to spill over up here. So there was also a very ugly my turn in the Towns news. I don't know if you guys had the opportunity to read that. But I had an interview with Jesse with the Towns News today talking about that. They got many, many, many phone calls in regard to that. So hopefully we can address some of those issues that were. Red River people very upset because we advertised in their newspaper and that was very racist and hurtful and mean, so. And incorrect, and incorrect. It was, it was just false news. It was, it was horrible. Anyway, so we're, we're trying to stay on that and, and just combat all the, the negative publicity that we're getting right now and keep our cases as low as we can. And so we're encouraging all of our businesses to do the COVID safe practice that will be listed on the tourism website and, and just try to move forward in as positive a way as we possibly can while staying safe. And always following the public health order, always, so. Any questions for me? Is there anything else I missed that we've been working on?
What is it called? The CA ID Committee?
Oh, COAD. There's a new, there's a group in Towns that I didn't even realize existed. It's the COVID something disaster group. So now we go to those meetings. We met with them last week or the week before and gave a presentation about all the things that we've been doing in Red River to, to be safe. And so now they've invited us to be a part of that meeting, so that's positive. That's a good thing. So they meet on Wednesdays at three-thirty. We'll have our meeting again Thursday for the Mayor's Economic Recovery Cast Force and hopefully if they postpone that to Friday, then we know that the governor will do a press conference on Thursday. If they don't, we don't know when she'll do a press conference, but, so we'll see about that. Okay, I think that's all I've got. I will move on to planning and zoning. And the first one is an application for variance and this is for Ted and I on a side setback. Lots fifty-two and fifty-three in Young Ranch. And what we did is we bought both of them and down the middle, there's an easement for utilities. And since we want to build in the middle, we asked for a variance to, to set aside the setback. Is Chapel on? Okay, Chapel, did you want to address that?
Yep, you summed it up well. It's Ted and Linda own both lots and their house plans to span the lot line. Adjointing, where fifty-two and fifty-three meet. And so they are requesting a side setback for the, or side setback variance for the seven and a half foot setback.
So it's just down the middle?
Yeah.
It's just down the middle.
So.
Planning and zoning has recommended this for approval.
And since I don't get to vote, I don't feel like I need to recuse myself, so. I would take a. Exactly, uh-oh. So I would take a motion to approve the variance for the side setback in Young Ranch for the EMTs.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Yeah, you've got, you've got it drawn into your, you've got, okay, thanks. You can see in there exactly how it is. Yeah. Um, okay, local.
Councilor Dan Foley. Councilor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Councilor Stone Covington.
Yes.
Councilor George Blundell.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The next one is for a final plat for Jason and Jennifer Wright, lot twenty-eight, town of Red River. So Chapel, you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, so as y'all are aware, this is, or was currently the, or previously Wilson's Woodyard across from the school. The lot lines prior to this final plat application have been running parallel to East High Street. And Jason and Jennifer Wright, Jason is on the call if you guys have any additional questions, but Jason and Jennifer Wright purchased the property and they would like to re- Jason and Jennifer Wright purchased the property and they would like to reorient the lots, um, to be perpendicular to High Street. They plan to develop this as, um, high density residential, I believe. The, they have not submitted the building plans or anything. This is just, um, for a lot line adjustment approval, but that is their plan is to turn it into residential. Um, so this is just a lot line adjustment approval for, to reorient the lot lines from, um, parallel to East High Street or to High Street to perpendicular to High Street. And you guys can see, if you look at the bound, the plat that they submitted for approval, you can see the faint original lot lines that, how they run and, um, their proposed new direction.
New ones are running.
Right, the dark ones. Okay, that makes sense.
Upside down or something. Their lots are on the east side of Center Street and Main Street up here.
Now, this is High Street. I thought it said High. East High Street, that's High. Yeah, so the, the school is across the street from them.
Okay.
And then, and then, um, Eric's workshop would be down towards the bottom. Correct. Yeah, so these run kind of behind.
So nothing's changing, except just.
Well, they're just, they're just. Cool. Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to accept, uh, planning and zoning's recommendation?
Make a motion to accept, um, zoning's recommendation for a final flat for Jason and Jennifer Wright.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call.
Counselor George Wondell.
Yes.
Counselor Steve, Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to new business. First item is to ratify, uh, Steve Williams as a new deputy marshal. I'm sure you guys all remember Steve when he was here, callback. Oh, did you?
He laughed right when we got here.
Okay, okay.
He's a nice guy.
And then his wife, Annette Williams, uh, is one of our new dispatchers. So if I could have a motion to ratify Stephen and Annette Williams. Okay, do I have a second?
Okay.
Any questions or discretion?
You have that.
Uh, I don't know who was first. I think Georgia was first. Okay, roll call.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Counselor George Wondell.
Yes.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next we'll move to consideration and approval of resolution twenty-twenty dash oh eight. Okay, Georgiana.
This is the legislative appropriations for four fifty.
Okay, the four hundred and fifty. And this gives me authorization to sign, to sign the grant agreement. So this is for the money that we got. Legislative. That's to replace a water line out in Tenderfoot.
Is that on schedule with Dennis on the asset?
This is just for the agreement.
This is. And the four fifty is just mainly for that.
Planning, design and swap.
Yeah. So if I could have a motion for resolution twenty-twenty dash oh eight?
I'll make a motion for resolution twenty-twenty dash oh eight.
Do I have a second? Okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor George Wondell.
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, the next one is resolution twenty-twenty dash nine. And this is for the, uh, funding agreement for our MAP funding. And you can see in there that it's the co-op and we're planning on, do we, do we list out what we're planning on doing here?
I believe this, is this the one?
Uh, this is for two thirteen, three thirty third.
That's for, it gives Independence Trail.
Independence Trail, okay. So we're just about to get, um, all of our side streets paved. And this is one that we haven't done yet. So this will get that done. So if I could have.
Make a motion and we, uh, through resolution two thousand twenty oh nine.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Counselor George Wondell.
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, lots of road stuff. Resolution twenty-twenty dash ten. And this is for the co-op. And this is for High Street. And so the funding is eighty thousand. And so, no, it's not for High Street. I'm wrong. I'm sorry. So we. Okay.
Russell, did you?
It would, it will include, uh, Independence Trail also and then some various streets. Because it's not enough funding to pave an entire street. So what we'll do is we'll include it, um, to help pay for Independence Trail, just in case there's not enough funding to do that street with the map.
Okay, and then it gives us money to do, uh, pothole and maintenance and things that we need to take care of, correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay, all right. So if I could have a motion for twenty-twenty dash ten?
Make a motion for resolution twenty-twenty dash ten.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Counselor George Wondell.
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, the next one is resolution twenty-twenty dash eleven. And this is a budget adjustment. And it actually looks different because now we are required by our auditors to itemize it. And you can see each one of the, uh,
Her fund, yes.
Her fund.
Well, actually, this, this, that's the fourth quarter one. That's what we cut for the fourth quarter. But what you see as far as that resolution, the resolution that's in front of you is, uh, line item adjustments for the year for, for the different funds. So.
And that's because we're closing our year because it's year.
Correct.
Okay, so just, um, you know, the general fund is the biggest one. Um, some are up, some are down. And a lot of it has to do with grant funds and revenue reserves and awesome. Okay, so if I could have a motion to approve twenty-twenty dash eleven?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash eleven.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, roll call.
Counselor Dan Foley. Counselor George Wondell.
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And the next one has to do with this one. Uh, it's, uh, twenty-twenty dash twelve for the municipal fourth quarter, um, our final quarter for the financial year. And these are, um,
The recap sheet.
Okay.
Basically, this is a resolution that the, um, mandates that we commit with our final budget.
Okay, is there anything on if it would need to, if it's unusual or?
Well, nothing on it unusual. Basically, it's just the cash balances that will, will bring up the, the, this current fiscal year. So it's the cash balances. To start.
Okay, so these will be our beginning cash balances as of this year. Okay, got it. Okay, so if I can have a motion for, uh, resolution twenty-twenty dash twelve? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hey, roll call.
Counselor George Wondell.
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The next one is for the Enchanted Circle Trails Association Agreement. And last year, this is with Carl Cornelius and he's working on the, uh, Quest of the Red River Trail and several other trails. You can see what he's actually working on. I know they had some meetings for the Horse Thief Mesa Trail just in the last few weeks. Um, so last year we, we did pay seventy-five hundred dollars and he's asking for the same seventy-five hundred dollars again. And he's also asking that we add the Quest of the Red River Trail to our ICIP so that we can begin to request funding for that. So, I mean, I think, I think he does a really good job. He works well with the forest service. He works well, uh, with the municipalities involved and he, he does a really good job of it. So if I could have a motion to approve the Enchanted Circle Trails Agreement? Do I have a second? Second. Okay, any questions or discussion about that?
Uh, just. No.
You sure?
Yeah. Um, no, it's all on. That's, that ICIP, putting that on our ICIP, there's no where as far as prioritized on the ICIP. It just needs to be on.
It just needs to be on there.
Have to be one of our top spots.
Right.
And then will we be able to, you know, as he's coordinating signage and defining signage, I think we'll be able to, by being a part of this, include like the Red River logo on all of those? If that's a thing they're doing.
If that's what they're doing. If you look at the Enchanted Circle Trails Association, we're on there. It lists all of the entities involved. So I would, I would guess that that's probably the direction they would go with the signage rather than making it all the different ones. Yeah. Okay.
These are what, these, these, they're trying to develop new trails. So they're, they're working on it.
Right, these are the ones that they're working on. Okay. Right, any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Counselor George Wondell.
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, then the next item is public comment to talk about the ICIP, which is the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Um, this is due, I believe it's not due until September because of COVID. Is it earlier? It's like mid, mid September, I was thinking. But we currently have, uh, the water line replacement.
This, this ICIP was submitted last year.
Okay.
So we'll have to update it and it'll have the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six ICIP application.
Okay, because things on here have gotten done. The skater system, the, um, the sledge handling, weren't we? No, we haven't done that yet. Um, so this, this is a time when we wanna encourage public input. So at our August meeting, we can actually look at this and prioritize it. So I would open it up. Do we have, we have people on, don't we? Sybil? Does anybody, um, wanna give us any input as to capital improvement projects that we not need to add to our plan for going forward?
Nope.
I think Mr. Cornelius requested that it be on there.
Yes, he's, he's the one that, that requested that we add it to the ICIP.
What is the regular conference center addition?
We had talked about going out that direction since we on that land and maybe doing additional meeting rooms or something like that.
Do we need to put any of those projects that were presented to us earlier today on there?
Is the public cert, Public Works Building on here?
Thought we used to have it on there.
I thought it used to always be on here. Oh, okay, it is. It's just way down. So that one we might wanna move up. We've got town hall and public works both on here. We might wanna add the solar facility.
As long as we keep perks up high.
Yeah. And the water, the water line replacement is on there. Um, and we'll be doing the design and then hopefully we can be able to find some money to actually do the replacement. And the sidewalks are on there.
The other one we might look at, just FYI is on the fire engine. I know we keep bumping it back and bumping it back.
It is. And I don't know that legislative money would ever go towards the fire engine. You know, and, and that's, we really wanna make sure that the top five includes the money we wanna go to legislature and ask for.
We, we currently have fire engine on there.
Right.
And we, we have ambulance on there also.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, anything else I can pick up? We might need to go on or anybody have a comment? Chris, April, Sybil, all of our public people here. Okay. All right. Okay. Um, then if there's nothing else on the agenda, we will be adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Now, if you guys, a while back, the Alpine wanted to be on our agenda concerning the street running it. Did they back off?
We went, we had a meeting.